And to the republic which stands one nation under God, in this whole, without justice for all.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome you all to the Smithfield Township Planning Commission for March nine, two thousand twenty-three. This is our regular monthly meeting. And actually, members present, we have everybody today. So that's good to see. Minutes for reviews, the February nine minutes. I took a, I took a look at them. I'm doing them.
I'm making motion to approve the minutes for February nine, twenty-three as presented.
Lucas, you got it? Hang on a second. We'll get it for you. All right. Most of you approved the minutes by Michael, seconded by David. Yep, all in favor? Okay, it is so approved. Any public comments on the agenda? All right, we're gonna move down here to new business and plans to act on. Adjust the order on these a little bit, so we can dispense with certain things and, and discuss on others. So that what I'm gonna propose is that we do it in the following order. A E D, and then C and B will do together, the ordinances. Sound good? Yes. Yep, A E D, and then we'll do C and D. Those are all organs. We'll wrap them up as the rest of the you know, the rest of the audience here doesn't need to sit in here all that much they want to. All right, Franklin Hill Manor Land Development Plan. It's like an old friend. It never falls off the agenda. Anybody here from them?
No.
No, and you guys are here. Stand up, gentlemen. Leslie, all right. You're here every month. And I, and I understand. It's cheap theater, I know.
It's getting better.
It's getting better. Thank you, boss. You know, they asked last month you were here, and they asked for an extension through April fifteenth. Has anybody contacted the two of you about water easement and so forth?
Can I make a motion that we table this until such time that we receive some information about easements either provided or declined? Or I guess we have to vote on it next time anyway, so.
Well, but let's calendar wise.
What is it? What is? We only have it to the fifteenth unless they file a new plan.
Okay.
And we're not aware of that.
And we don't have, this isn't a new plan. This is the, for some reason, the same stuff that we, we have, right? Yeah, this is the same map, Dave.
What's, what's the last revision date on that?
November third, twenty twenty-two.
November third, twenty twenty-two, so then we're, you would add nine.
No, no, that's the idea. What I'm talking about is the, the actual plan that was made over twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-one.
Okay, so then, you know, we're I mean, look, I've, let me see for the date here.
Yeah.
April fifteenth is a Saturday. But it will, well, we're gonna need some extra, an extension, I think, because April thirteen is when your meeting would be, which is the second Thursday.
Is that the second Thursday?
Even if you would recommend approval or denial, it's not gonna have enough time to get before the board of supervisors. So I will have to contact them and say I need more time, or we need more time.
Or we can make a motion to not, to recommend denial of the approval plan.
You can do that, too.
I haven't tried my.
I'm gonna make a motion that we recommend to the supervisors that we deny approval on the plan of Franklin Hill Manor. Seconded. Seconded by Doug Scriber. Any discussion?
Why are we denying it? Because they haven't given us the information we need?
It's been probably years now at this point. If denied, we have to make a decision on that.
So we deny it, then it automatically goes to the supervisors.
And they can make a, and they can make a vote of up or, up or down. They can do whatever they wish.
They can say, we have a, an extension here.
Have an extension, then it can come back to us, right? If they give an extension, sure, it can come back here if they are going to make changes. But all I see here is John's November third letter, right? We have no, there's no response to it, and it was here.
Yeah, the denial would be based upon that November three review letter.
Yeah. So yeah, that would be my motion is to, that we recommend denial of of Franklin Hill Manor based upon the
block of response.
Uh, like the November three, two thousand twenty-two review letter by L V L Engineering. Can they second it? Okay, Doug seconded. A discussion from the panel? All in favor?
All right.
Hi. Any opposed? No? That's what I recommend.
Can I just ask what the?
What that means?
Yeah. Do you have to come next, next month?
What, what that means is that the, the planning commission is recommending that the supervisors deny the plan. That's what the commission does to them. Review things and they make recommendations. So now it goes before the board of supervisors and they have to act before April fifteen. If they fail to act by April fifteen, the plan is deemed proof. So they have to act before April fifteen, uh, and they can either accept the recommendation or say, no, we're not going to deny the plan and ask that the applicant provide additional time to review the plan. So that's really what they're gonna have to make a decision at to that. And and a lot of times people think, well, it's the township that gives the extension. That is not the case. The extension is granted by the applicant. And in my opinion, the township can't reject an extension if it's given. Uh, because an extension means there is no earth moving. There is no adverse consequences to the township. There is nothing hurt by asking for an extension. So I've always taken that position, though. If they say, well, so deny it. Here's another extension through June or July. The township's gonna have to accept that, but we don't know that yet. Now we're at this stage of the recommendation stage. We'll go before the supervisors and then they'll make that call.
Uh, Mr. Press, how would I find that out?
Well, I would say that the supervisors meet every, uh, where they meet on the second and fourth Wednesday of every month. So I would simply call, and that's six. They meet at six, not at seven. And I simply call to see whether or not it's gonna be on the agenda. Lucas, help me out. Is the agenda also posted before the meeting?
Yeah, they posted online before the meeting, and both on the door, but.
So if you know how to get that online, I, I, with my gray hair, I'm not the best on getting on that online stuff, but if you get online, you'll be able to see whether it's all gonna be on the agenda for that night.
Okay, thank you very much.
Everybody gets second and fourth Wednesdays.
Okay.
And, and you can't find the agenda, you can call.
All right, thank you.
Just keep your eye on it, gentlemen, all right? Thanks. All right. Next, E of the agenda, conditional use application. Says Robert Howell, but it's the Shawty. I know, it's the Shawty, yeah, only one. Gentlemen, let's come on up.
Hello, great.
And I'm recusing myself.
Yes, you are.
Perfect. I thought you were gonna lead the discussion. From this side.
All right. So this is a, uh, we have to have go through a conditional use theory.
Oh.
On a, uh, on a chain, this is really a change of use. Who wants to, who wants to give us a brief talk? Cause this doesn't look like there's really there's no, there's no site plan on this, right? About the green, this interesting, existing building?
Existing building, uh, existing house.
Yeah.
Just a change of use. It's a contiguous really to the property. We have the garages and the Worthington on one side, and then the house on the other side.
And the change of uses from resident, from what residential to part of the resort?
Basically, yes. And inventory will be, you know, booked through the hotel and.
That's what I was gonna ask you, right? It'll all be booked through your front desk and everybody.
Exactly the same manner as what we now call the Worthington, which in the old days was called the Fairway House, all the way down on the right, where Jackie Pleason used to play pool. Everyone knows the Fairway House.
Okay.
So it will be, it'll be, you know, checking again.
Right.
Sort of on the website.
Around just three bedrooms, so is it limited to a certain number of people?
Yes. Yeah. So there's three bedrooms, probably six, six people.
Yeah. Okay. Bro, why are we going through, cause it's conditional use only because of changing you?
Not under the regulations of, of the works, it requires a conditional use approval.
In R one.
In, in an R one.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, and they are, okay, yeah.
So that, that's why. There was some concern that perhaps the request was being made to be for short-term rentals, and I had looked at that and said, that's not really what the application is for.
No, that's not what this is.
Yeah, well, there was some concern about that when it first came in, and I said, no, it's a conditional use requirement because it's a resort use uh, in the R one zone.
Right, especially if you check in it all through the, through the normal course of the hotel, it's.
And it's right across from the resort. My understanding has been used traditionally for maybe a whole bunch of years for resort purposes. I think maybe employees might have stayed there sometimes, maybe resident, maybe guests have stayed there, so.
I said, actually, it looks great. It's really enhanced the area.
That's good.
Yeah, I live two doors from there.
Okay.
If you look at the, the packet here.
Yeah.
Chair, it's got the site plan development, like what, what's expected to occur.
All right.
A statement of the purpose and then the request. And it says for variances. I don't think it's a yeah, it's, there's no request for variance.
No, there's probably no need, right?
No, no need. So like the other three envelopes or whatever you have. Right, yeah, so this would be a fourth one.
It would be, I see.
Okay. Well, I'll make a motion that we recommend a group, uh, change of, the, the change of use from the, uh, from the R one to the resorts of the it can be used as part of the, as part of the resort.
Yes, sir. Chair, do you believe any condition should be added to that or not?
What about, uh, safety equipment and, uh, fire escapes, stuff like that, that traditionally have to be put in a resort type?
I mean, as far as, is, uh, it's only one story. It's one story, and it does have, it does have, uh, uh, some protectors in it, so.
Yeah.
It conorts with, uh, yeah, it could, yes, sir.
And a couple, and a couple entrances and exits.
Correct. There's a back entrance and a front entrance, those, those as far as, uh, you know, egress from there.
Audible alarms and so forth and so on.
Yes, sir. Does it have to go in front of the, um, the code officials for compliance with the code? Change of use?
Not be, be change of use, but if it's gonna be considered a commercial property for the resort, might need to, you know, an eye guy or gal.
But it's a change of use, right? Is that what you're doing? Change of use?
Yes.
Yeah, so whatever they would need, whatever they would need in order to, to turn it into part of their, uh.
Yeah, so I think as a minimum, change of use, you have to make sure it's up to code for that use.
Yeah, but it's, but that's not what we do now.
Well, it could be a condition just to make sure it's done.
Okay, go for that on that. All right, so, so, I'll, I'll amend the motion to say, as long as it complies with any we want, with any
Building codes.
Any, uh, any
applicable building codes.
Applicable building codes for the resort use that is intended. How about that?
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Anybody seconded by Bob Moses? Any other discussion? All in favor?
I.
I. Okay, six oh.
I'm the opposite. All right, Hughes.
God, you're pushing.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. I, thank you. Nice to see you. Thank you.
Gentlemen, before you leave.
Yes, sir.
I was told that last night's board of supervising meeting that I think they're looking to the, the supervisors to act upon this on March twenty-second.
Okay.
Uh, I don't know if I can get it advertised in time for that. That's only ten days away, and I need two advertisements, et cetera, so that may change. I don't remember when the application was filed, so I have to see whether February sixth.
Yeah.
So we would technically have until beginning of April, so that day may change, but just check what the powers would be. I'm gonna try to see if I can't get it done then.
Run it. You check with.
I called today, and of course, no one was there. When I called, they're in the, they're in the afternoon, in the afternoon, and I was in court, so.
We're trying to find out if we, if the advertising would say Saturday and Monday, it would be two different weeks, so we, we.
I mean, I, that would not be something they would do. I need to know whether, I mean, I make that call as to whether that's two success, two successful weeks. I need to know if they'll take that because tomorrow's Friday already. They may say, we ain't taking this in until next week. We jump into next week for the first advertisement. I can't get the second advertisement in seven days before the hearing. Cause the latest it can go into seven days before second advertisement. So I'll, I'll check ins with the, with you guys as soon as I know.
To make it happen, one supervisors meeting, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'd appreciate every effort to make it.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Bye, guys. Thank you.
Thank you. See you.
Yeah.
See you. Nice to see you.
Done. Done. Oh, Smithfield Gateway Center. Hey, John Coach. John. Well, nice to see you. All right, this is now phase one H twenty-two. All right, before we get to your submissions, I started with Bob this morning. All right, we have two major problems. Two oh nine is deteriorating. For up to me, I shut the whole thing down because there are hubcaps all over the place, including Dan and Yvonne, both hubcaps. Because I had to give them a ride at nine thirty of the morning, which cost them seven hundred dollars to fix their car because the road is deteriorating. All right, and they tried to put in some coal patch and it's portable. And it's deteriorated again because I drove home today and they were picking up hubcaps again today. I saw it as I was driving back home from the office. It's a serious problem. The road is falling apart. Yeah.
Right in front of the message back to.
Yeah, well, I already tried to with one person, and this is as far as we've gotten, but it is a, it's a very serious problem.
Right.
And the second thing is, the, uh, the side entrance that whoever tried to, who's cut that in that is not on any plan or anything else that we've ever studied.
It's not on previous plans, correct? I'll explain that if you like.
Well, I don't know what you're gonna explain. And there's no permit. You cut it in entrance. So what are you gonna explain?
I'm sorry. I apologize. I thought you were talking about what's on the current plan.
No, the current plan is, I know, cause it's got the lights and whatever else, but this is the one that's down over in front of, basically in front of the daycare and in front of the ravines.
Okay, if they did a construction entrance.
It's not a construction entrance.
No, no, I, so I apologize. Let me just, just make sure I'm clear. It's got a, Mr.
We've been through this before.
So through the, the, on the side going into Music Center Drive.
Yeah.
At one point, there was an old, the old easement that allowed access to the back of those lots. There was an easement on that track that runs from Music Center Drive to the site. That was utilized, I think, with a trucked entrance to maintain that activity. If they've cut it different, but I'm not aware that I can check that. I will drive by on the way out to the, to be.
Yeah, take, take a look. Cause it's all brand new stone. Remember, I mean, it's packed stone.
On Music Center Drive.
Yes, across from, across from the daycare.
Yeah.
Not the one that was the one that they have cut that, that's, that's supposed to come out. To the light, uh, and you know, that's.
Well, there used to be like two houses on that corner, Music Center and Seven Bridge.
Right.
Is that the property you're talking about?
If you're talking about right behind that property, that's where the accident, that, so the first properties that are on the corner of Music Center and two oh nine. At the very back of that property was an easement for access to Music Center Drive. I think that's where they cut their original front. The access that's actually intended for the permanent roadway, that should be separate component. We, that's being used as a construction. But I'll check the two.
Okay, that shouldn't be a permanent entrance, no matter what. So you have to ask tonight, you are submitting what?
So tonight is the one eight two, which refers to, so you've seen the whole phase one, it's broken down into medical center and the nine thousand square foot, we developed phase one A one. And now across the main driveway is a corner lot, which is now phase one A two. So one A two consists of a, a walk, uh, convenience store, gas, and a restaurant. Those two are being proposed on that corner. Basically, I find the same land and using the same infrastructure we had before to develop that property now, which has, that are, that are onboard. John brought some boards.
What's going in one A one, anything?
So one A one has the, the back parcel still looking for a restaurant then.
Develop, or it's Dunkin'. So Dunkin' Donuts is just to the south of that.
Okay.
Okay, so that plus, that plus, that, that portion is actually the phase that was the retail phase on, on phase one. So everything to the, everything past the Dunkin' Donuts should include the nine thousand square foot path. That's, that's to the left if you're looking at the site from two oh nine. With the medical office center, St. Luke's. So it's, it's retail path, nine thousand square feet. St. Luke's main access drive, signalized the loop road that'll connect out to, um, forty-seven, I'm just, it's up there. Then, um, the, and then to the right of that driveway is where we're coming in for an application now for final, from what was originally the preliminary phase one plans that were for the fourth part.
And just so I know, are we just accepting the plan?
Yeah.
Looking to begin the ninety-day review.
Yeah, this is just to, this is just to have it.
Anything I can help explain along that line?
Just a question. When will St. Luke's be occupied?
Don't have the occupied, uh.
Thirty at the end?
Thirty is this month?
They're moving in the thirties, so they're.
Right, the March, yeah, three weeks. They're gonna put the stoplight in. But how are they moving in?
Ask the developer, but they're moving in, that's what they.
How do they get to move in? They have a stoplight.
I guess they agreed to a stop time temporarily. I don't know.
Who would they agree with?
The, the, between them and, and I, I don't know.
Yeah.
The, the access for, um, they're building out the, the width and the length of it, but the range configuration is gonna start um, to serve as the medical center ahead of the, of, I'm doing the, the lane, I'm doing the integration, but there has to be, there should be a light there for the ultimate build out. Let me just pull up the drawing business. So for comparison, I have the old plan and I have a new plan, so I'll put up the new plan first. And I, we have the center here, or what we do the best better.
There's fine. That's okay.
So what I'm gonna point out is thing or anything we were just talking about. Everything basically to the east of the main driveway coming in, two portions represent walk was on the front end, with the recon station and the pumps, and then a restaurant pad in the back end. And basically, this occupies the same land mass that was previously there between the connecting road to Music Center Drive and then, uh, the main loop road.
Can I just sort of back up a little bit and ask you a little bit about St. Luke's?
Sure.
It's, it looms there, and I wonder if, uh, wasn't there supposed to be some kind of berm or, or, uh?
There's some landscaping, right?
Landscaping in front.
I have some there.
Yeah, there's landscaping that's proposed along the front, basically that.
It's proposed.
Yeah, and so it has to be built.
Ah, okay. And it was supposed to be like American berm with trees.
It's not a berm. It's actually, they call it a living fence. It's, it's, it's basically brush shrubs.
Well, some things planted there already, though.
Yeah, they've put some in, but I think they have to still complete, you know, there's a landscaping plan. Actually, I didn't, I apologize, I didn't bring that.
There is phase one plan, phase one A one plan that has that full landscaping plan picked it up.
Right, and to the left.
We're just like, well, this is how, this is the picture here, and we'll see different trees. This is up on this hill, by the way. You've seen the.
Right.
While it's there.
To our left, to our left of St. Luke's, what is that? That's a pad?
This is a retail pad, nine thousand square feet.
That's the Dunkin?
That was ultimately intended to be the new Dunkin', but I'm not sure the timing on when that's going up. Is there a tenant yet for the restaurant, or just still?
Not that I'm aware of, yeah. Oh, I'm sorry.
Is the walk done? Done, dear?
Yeah, the walk was, is a, is a lease moved forward now, that would allow the project before, allowed me to actually finish the design. No, I think the stoplight's still required for everything that's there.
Apparently, it was required for St. Luke's and doesn't make a damn many difference, does it?
Yeah, the difference is the, the DOT governs things based on trips. And the trip for a driveway, the, the St. Luke's deal includes the signalizing, so you will see it, if it's a matter of just spit out and moving in that kind of scenario, I don't know about actually accepting patients yet, what the timing is on that. Yeah, I know the owner's not here to, the, he's not here to fuck about it, but I can get a better read from them on what those.
They painted yesterday. They're gonna move in like a quick. Well, there's jurisdiction on that, on that, the signal.
And how does?
So it's up to them to have it put in.
Based upon, yeah, based. Based upon, yeah, based upon the application that I reported. It is approved. Just a matter, I don't want to speak out of turn on the timing. I know the financing has built these various segments in order to deal with the different elements, so they're broken up into different contracts. So I don't want to speak out of turn as to which contract is putting that signal in, but it is part of that overall run that has to be put in. And when will the road be widened to four or five lanes or whatever it was supposed to be? The next phases that we're talking about in the back and under the perimeter area. So these phases up front are still under that threshold.
What is the, just curious, the new the new restaurant pad, what is?
So this pad isn't, there's no tenant for it yet, but it's been.
No, I mean the one.
I don't have the lease name for the tenant yet. Haven't been made where.
Okay.
We have, you know, a prototype building we've used for the for the layout.
So continue what you were saying about the other one.
Yeah, this this pad in the back is still pending until they get a tenant. And again, it's. People have said in the past, you know, build it and then that will crack to the right of.
Stuart Boyer latest?
Yeah.
That's me. You're right, it's a restaurant we can walk to. I'm sure.
What is it?
But so we, Roy Rogers.
That will be shiny crap.
Anyway. You would have a problem, no? That I wouldn't, anyway. No, it's, I mean, this is just to get the this to get it started. I I mean, there's gonna be a lot of engineering comments, I'm sure, when this.
When it's done, it is done.
Right, yeah. It has John's review, it has the conservation district review, so there's other entities that'll be.
Yeah.
So John, this is all part of the master plan, so what you're giving us now is just the the final details of the development of just that section.
One A one, yeah.
So when we're when we're when he's looking at this, when John Tesla's looking at this, he's looking at landscaping, stuff, stormwater, all of that stuff.
Right.
But a lot of that was looked at under the master plan, wasn't it?
Earlier is that we're still utilizing the same approach to the project and I can find the same.
Could you pull up the original and show us the difference that we're gonna get out of it? What's what's changed? Yeah.
At least. So I'm looking at just plans.
Mine's a shame, it's just your memory.
The original phase one approved plan, it it included what was originally approved here as well, and then it's been subsequently finalized to the St. Luke's. And then this is the same, this is the area that we're talking about here for the phase one eight two.
Yeah.
So basically, this back bank has now become a restaurant and this retail up front has become the Wawa's. With the. You actually, in your original approval, envisioned potential service state of gas station because of the signage to have the allocation for the. Gas price signage in one of the signs for the project. So that's that's where it landed on there as opposed to potentially could have been here.
Right.
That's where the.
I should hope that was a hotel.
No, not the original group.
Yeah, I thought so too.
Back there, yeah.
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 The big offices to the. Yeah, so retail, hotel, restaurant, and then residential. You have a twenty years original plan. Yeah, I.
At this pace.
Yeah. You know, I said I've been working in the area for twenty eight, twenty seven years now, that is, and this is the improvements other than the intersection of. Four forty seven and two oh nine that I've seen on this highway. So I know this is a big change for everybody. You see something come through and and feeling deterioration absolutely needs to be done. I'm saying, I understand this is a change that hasn't been seen in over years.
Yeah, finished in years, so we still haven't seen it yet.
So what? Well, a piece of the time.
Now, we're not into the high-rise residential mix of commercial.
There's still, yeah, there's still.
That's back in.
Yeah, yeah, code developers is the residential component.
They have the grid of rubber, they're allowed to do that.
Right.
Yeah, the road infrastructure is required for that as well. So this is the application that's gonna be reported, basically, for review is, you know, that's the comparable site plan. Basically, the infrastructure of the detention basins that were posed here are being retained. We had one small basin here, it's actually gonna be an underground infiltration basin underneath the restaurant pad. There's the access connected here that basically services the pad from the. Wawa pads, well, this 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 connection here is still the same. The walls, so I've one minor shift here. The walls that were constructed along two oh nine have a grid material in them that keeps them stabilized. And the signage in back and forth with the folks from Wawa, they didn't want to have the sign structure built within the grid system of the wall. So we shifted the sign over a little bit to get it out of the grid of the currently constructed wall. There's just a sequence of destruction that came first as opposed to being built at the same time. So we'll be moving the sign over to the. Adjacent.
They're they're keeping the Wawa on Prospect Street across from the college, you know?
I'm not aware of that.
Yeah, they just renovated, it's all we think so.
They make a ton of money. It was the one on West Main Street. I mean, it's they'd never build them that way again, but. I would imagine per square foot, it must be a license to print money. I mean, good heavens. The traffic was ridiculous through there.
John, the that's retail on the far left there, which potentially could be Duncan. That was that already approved as part of the others?
Yes.
So that's ready to go?
Yeah, everything here to the left of the medical center and the retail are good to go. It's a phase one A file.
Okay.
This, we haven't come back to this pad yet, you know, pending a tenant, you know, that's the reason we're here, that's the tenant down.
Is that road done? I'm always looking out for kind of.
This this road will be built as a part of this to basically get the connection made for the the roadway. Yeah. The intersection.
I got a totally unrelated question. Why was that pipe that crossed several bridges forty two feet down?
So it's during the actual engineering, the construction pricing of the project came back with and said from a value engineering point of view. They wanted to combine our two pipes. We had two pipes that crossed the road. When they came back and asked for it to be one pipe because of the boring underneath two oh nine being an expensive proposition, that forced it to lower it so we could connect two pipes, one pipe coming in high. The other pipe coming in had actually lowered the whole system to catch the the other end. So it's basically just to be graded at the other side.
The other side?
Yeah, being our way down to the.
Speak a little louder, I think this is the microphone. I haven't come hearing you there.
Oh, sure, I'll try and direct mine. So, yeah, it was built, it was built to combine instead of having two crosses in or two oh nine, they had one, and that forced us by the time we go all of our. That's one convenience point, it forces to lower it down and then.
Couldn't believe I'm down.
And that's the reason for the the back of war to make it to disrupt the road to open and touch.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right, so this is the first submission. Do I want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the submission.
All right, motion made by Michael Belver, seconded. Dave Strunk seconded. All in favor?
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate that.
So once you have a goal of three comments. No more than three.
Yeah. Okay, right, I don't want to interrupt. This is my concern. Your that this side access is is over here. It's in here, so they're gonna come this way, when they're gonna, because this is gonna be right in or right out. This is the this is the one that they're cutting, I think.
Oh, that that shouldn't be, that if they did that for construction.
Scott, which one are you speaking to?
This is the one we were talking about, it's over here.
Yes.
It's right in here.
Yeah.
All right.
Did they close the other one?
No, this is still open. That's the that's the regular one and that's this one.
I think it's this one, isn't it?
No, it is not.
No, this, no, down here.
So where it is. I'll go by it every day.
And all the time that we're constructing it.
Well, that's what they're calling it.
That's only temporary, right?
Yeah. But with two big pipes under about seventy five tons of rock.
I think this is what you're talking about.
No, that's not it.
On the ground out there physically, you're talking about.
I've been showing you where it is, when you go by it.
Opposite this driveway over here, roughly. Yeah, we. Talk about this, this has not been approved. Correct, that's part of the, that's what I was just mentioning before, so but that being connected. Now allowed for better circulation.
You said there's two pipes underneath a pile of rock. Sounds like a set basin to me.
There may be a basin, there was a there was a set basin proposed there, I don't know.
That's all right, we'll come back next week, next month.
So I might if you might listen to go back to the. Upper about the state of the road, there were always, to confirm that entrance, make sure it's either not an entrance. Or if it is a set basis example, John's pointing out, you know, what is it for? And ask.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, John. Thank you, everybody.
All right. C and B or B and C, maybe we should do it. Solar and warehouse ordinance and then parking, you know, let's do the solar, let's do B first, how does that sound? Because that's the draft solar and the draft warehouse ordinances that we have.
One of nineteen pages.
Yes, that's this one.
I believe this is shared that the commission may have reviewed these. May have reviewed these earlier, I don't remember.
Well, last month, we had a pretty spirited discussion. It was pretty good. Yeah, that's pretty good.
Been revised whereby the. Solar energy facilities that I'll call them the commercial facility have to be approved as a conditional use in the. Resort economic development at M one districts. Accessory solar uses like you do when you use for your house, they they're permitted in any district. As to the warehouse, as the definitions have been. Uh, there is modified now, and that you find it all bottom of page four.
Yep.
And that these warehouses that are. Up to a maximum of fifty thousand square feet are allowed in the ED zone. But any warehouses, even if it's fifty thousand square feet, wholesale establishment, logistics distribution centers and fulfillment centers. Are allowed in the M one zone, but only as of the conditional use. So the warehouse definitions. Have been refined to just be four now, the regular warehouse, wholesale establishment, logistic distribution and fulfillment center.
And can we get a reminder, massive distribution center, what was the size there?
Hundred and fifty thousand.
No, what you want it, which way?
You can do a warehouse?
No, tell me the one that was being proposed.
On Russ Scott's. That was like.
So the maximum that's now or under this, the maximum will be out and need to be fifty thousand.
In the ED, yes. In fact, it might be under fifty thousand, you know, that little. Uh, slalom word, let me just.
Forty nine thousand.
Yeah, so. Yeah, so if it's under, no, it's up to fifty thousand or okay. Warehouse in ED can be up to fifty thousand square.
I'm looking at page seventeen and it says a hundred and fifty thousand. I'm not sure if I'm looking.
That would be an additional regulation for all of the uses.
Two or three Walmarts.
BD is the bottom of page. Two or page four.
Four. Four.
Right. Yeah, oh, okay. These are additional regulations. For.
To be added to.
As you can say, it says warehouse uses over fifty square, et cetera, as you can see in section six. And then you'll see it says there, the building cannot be next to fifty feet in height with an extra ten feet of roof projections. Off street loading loading spaces, access drive wants to connect to a bus road. These are all on page eighteen. And. What we added, I believe, from the last discussion was number eleven, the mechanical scraper.
Yeah, oh, yeah, that's right, yeah.
And I think we also made clear that we needed an emergency access road, which was number ten. As the buildings must be sprinkled, I think that would be required under building code anyway, but. So it it sort of seems to have incorporated the changes that were discussed. I know that Mr. Boyer had a number of questions and. Based upon emails that have come in back and forth over the last day or two. But that pretty much is the. The thumbnail sketch of the of the work.
What what is an RE district?
Resort.
Resort. What is mountain manor?
R Y one.
I'd like to have whoever's writing this consider including a definition for a community-based solar system. I just, I mean, we talked about it previously and I learned a little bit more about it. And it's basically where a group of people, the kind of what I had.
That was in one of the emails today.
Yeah, collectively gather. The resources and fund that is solar and the 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 power is, you know. Dedicated to their building, even though it doesn't come directly to them. But we talk about the SEF. And A S E F, but I think we need to also include limits for community. Currently, it's not allowed in the state of Pennsylvania, but there's legislation that's being proposed to allow it.
What a community? Is that community?
Community, yeah, community is not currently allowed.
Well, then we can't, then we can't act on it.
Well, and we're saying it is allowed in by conditional use in an ED, and I feel like any development like that would end up happening in an ED, but it's not.
No, no, it's gonna be bigger than that. It's gonna be bigger than what we would put in an ED.
No, but they're allowed by initial use in this.
Where where are we talking now?
Section three, one.
It says solar energy facilities used as instructions should be allowed in a condition, right, they are.
That's why, that was what was added to that based on your conversation. And then if you look at the definition of that, that is the facility, but it's only allowed by conditional use. My question, my my concern is, what is the definition of a solar energy facility? Before, and I think it's the definition that you're looking for for. Now, I think we decided it would not be allowed in an R one, but you could let it happen in an ED because if you were gonna have a community thing like that, it would have to be done in ED anyway.
And that still requires all the buffering, right?
Yeah, that the land development doesn't.
Yeah, it does not change, yes, the subdivision of land development still applies, right? Yes, this is just. Yeah, that still applies, yeah.
This would like somebody to consider further defining this, the SEF. To include a community-based system too, make sure that that's covered.
Well. You pretty much wrote this, so I guess you're the guy that.
I didn't write this, I just had comments.
Well, it was based on your research.
I mean, if you look at. Facility, there's that. Read that definitely, I think that's on page three, not specific about that, basically something that primary use is to collect solar and feed it back.
If I are hearing. If I'm hearing Mr. Strunk correctly, though, if it's not permitted in the state, we can't put it in this order.
Right, that's.
Once it's adopted in the state, well, then we can always amend the order. We can't put something in that's not permitted.
It's not, it's not a police power that's been granted to us, the municipal planning code to regulate on. We can't, we can't authorize a use that's not otherwise lawful for the state. Not possible.
And again, what we tried to do, and again, Julia worked on this more than me, but we're in a joint effort. We tried to make that solar energy facility definition. Broad enough to maybe encompass this community. Idea that, because I think David talked about this at the last, at the last meeting, now whether it could fly, who knows, but.
There's no size limit.
Under page three, under the definition. The first sentence is just three lines long. It said thermal power primarily used for off-site use. All I'm saying is, if it's a community-based system. We could expand that definition to say, or within, or within the local community. That.
But off-site just means not where that's sold.
Not if it's a PRD and they want to have a community-based system.
If it's a PRD, this doesn't matter. Can do what they want. Yeah, I'm just. Well.
Not a PRD, but what if it's a developer and it's gonna be an HOA and they're gonna put in a community, maybe in five years, community will be allowed. But if we change the definition now, we don't have to address it later. And all you need to say is that. Because it says off-site.
Right.
Which means that if it's a part of a resident development. And that's part, all part of all one thing, then off-site would be. Then off-site would be banger. Whereas if it's or the lo- or within the local community, I think we've sort of covered our cases there, does that make sense?
We added that specifically because you said it would, it would be possible for that electricity to actually technically blow off the site.
It would.
That's why.
Why I said, why would anybody do this?
Well, I mean, I I guess I'm just saying, I think that you're covered there. But I mean, I guess you could also say supply electrical thermal power, period.
Just get rid of primarily for off-site use. I mean, I thought we added that specifically because. That ability.
Well, if you if you stick with, stick on the word primarily, what if they say it's not for off-site use?
That's what I mean, so just end after thermal power.
Yeah, we could do that.
I I don't think there's any risk of. Saying, I don't think there's any, my personal view, but there's any issues with. Not having it for off-site use, because it was just used for something that's there.
I always have in the back of my head, the drug facility over there in golf course. Over at Water Gap, where we didn't specifically have a use called drug rehab, we had rehab, we'd have drug rehab. And that's what started all the hoopla over there. So we have something in here that says SEF and. A SES, which are defined, and somebody says they want to put in a community based system that's not defined in here, does that mean that they can put it? Anywhere they want.
Well, wait, we have three different kinds of solar, just. To really, and I'm bas- basing this on what you proposed, one is community. But what is the next one that's a?
Well, you have the accessory, like I have in my house. For my house only, and then you have the solar, the SEF, which is. Basically, it could be where they put the system in and all they're doing is selling electricity to DJM grid. All right, and they're selling it at three cents a KWH.
So the confusion is only over the community.
Yes, right.
I I mean, so I I think if. Get rid of the the one, two, three, four, five words, primarily for off-site use, your community definition fits.
I think so too. I know I'm splitting hairs. I just don't want anything like a drug rehab.
So do you want, but do you want to ban the uh? The idea of setting up a mini solar power plant and selling it to the.
But if somebody.
That's only allowed in it by writing in M one.
So, right, right, correct.
Okay, yeah, I get.
It's conditional use to gain in a re- resort or.
I'm just saying, if it's not defined as the community, which is different than an SEF or an AS. Yes, does that raise any flags? Uh, what Mike said, I think would solve the problem. I mean, you still can't do it in exclusively R one.
Right. Have to be a development, right?
Oh, but that's not a commercial zone, right? The development would not be a commercial zone.
I mean, you could. If you did, if it was in. Oh, in ED, it's allowed in ED. Resort. Or M one. Well, I mean.
But a development would not be any of the one.
It could be in an ED, as long as there was commercial and residential. Next issues, if you use incentivized.
I thought we were talking originally last week about a PRD.
That would also be allowed in resort, it's also allowed, PRDs are allowed uses in resorts, zones in. ED zones and. I don't know where else.
What is PRD?
So like Williams PRD and. Uh, I don't know.
As to the PRDs, though, they're not bound by the township. So it doesn't matter what. We also have a PU regulation.
Also allowed in R two.
I write, no, the state law says. They are no longer bound by the township subdivision or any ordinance. So they have their own declaration of covenants and that kind of stuff, and that's what they gotta follow.
Although. I will say. They often reference.
Yeah, and if they do, well, then they by. Incorporation then put those ordinances back into their soup, but generally.
Which I also wonder about, this is a completely separate topic, but. If you're referencing on ordinance and then that ordinance changes, does it change in the PRD as well? I think it does.
It would depend, I guess technically, does it say? Ordinance uh, one O two as amended. Which then it would, or if it just says ordinance one O two without the amendment, I don't know. We have other council here too that might be able to weigh in on that, I would think if it just says one O two without the amendments. Could be an issue, that's why anytime I reference an ordinance, I always put as amended or as may be amended. So that you never have that issue saying, well, they changed it, so now it doesn't apply or something.
Yeah. Maybe it's my legal workup already.
I don't, I don't wanna beat it down, but I wanna bring this up one more time. So if there was to be some sort of development that met the ordinances that was to go into. Mountain Manor, what's the other one that's over there, Mountain Lake House or something?
Uh, yeah, I don't know about you.
Well, Mountain Manor presently as a zone, we'd knock you out, because it's. Hear me out, alright. Alright, and let's just say that they were gonna put in this. Condos, townhouses, single family. And and then they, as part of that, and maybe it's not a PRD, but as part of that, they said. We would like to put in a community based solar system, and that's not defined in your ordinance. Therefore, we have the right to do it, because. We're only supplying that power to our community, which are these fifty seven residences.
If you eliminate, if you eliminate those words, those five words, that definition still fits under solar. Cause its primary use is to collect electricity for for energy and thermal power. Or I can add after the thermal power. Uh. It's the, or the off-site use rather, I could put with for off-site use or within the community service.
That you're permitting, yeah.
Well, I I was gonna say, no matter what, you still. Right now, Mountain Manor couldn't. Do that.
But you also can't build a condo anyway.
Well, I'm just, I'm I'm not getting into my hairs, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, because it's not defined. Oh, okay, let's leave it at this, when they do allow community based, we need to go back and revisit this.
I don't think you do if. Well, right now. For anything, well, I'm gonna call this something different, but if the definition of that thing is the exact same definition as something.
Tell that to the people who don't work yet.
Yeah, but that was different, because it didn't meet, their definition did not meet the same definition, it was different than that.
Okay.
The language that we have now, I think hopefully will work until community based is approved. If it is approved, I agree with Mister Strunk, then we should come back. Make a change to the ordinance, it's not that difficult and put in that language. This way we're safe.
Yeah.
Do you wanna add a decommissioning to this ordinance?
Alright, I will go with whatever the planning commission is. Planning commission to decide this, and I think.
I thought we had to be commissioned.
And we're we're seeing what we talked about.
Yeah, we did, yeah, don't worry. I think hold on for a second.
I thought you had decommissioning.
Yeah, there's. Yeah, page eleven.
Eleven?
Actually, page ten.
Oh, there it is.
Decommissioning.
On the back of the page, my error. So what do we need to do with this then, Ron?
Just say, uh, you know, you approve it out of this, because I'm gonna advertise it come Monday. Uh, and I wanna know what ordinance I'm advertising.
Can I, can we, can we remove those five words? No, if we're gonna visit, revisit it.
You can remove it, but then it's gotta go back to the Monroe County Planning Committee. Not gonna make the timeframe, because this has to be adopted.
No, it's not allowed anyway, then.
I hear you, I'm just trying to make it so that we never have changes. As soon as we have the periodic amendment, then we can amend anything. Okay, we need, we're up against a deadline with that. Okay, I'll make a motion, we recommend approval of the draft ordinance number two forty nine as presented.
And I think everybody knows that I am not for approving this on the email. Alright, Chris, Chris seconds it, any other discussion? I will start here, all in favor? One, two, three. Four, five, and and opposed. I have a. Well, can we have some discussion on this before we go? We just voted.
You, we can discuss.
Yeah, if you make the motion before, yeah.
The problem with not having this by this deadline is they can put these things anywhere they want, right? It's not defined. So it's not allowed anywhere, or it's allowed everywhere. Right now, by law, someone comes in, they can go anywhere, that's. So it's better than nothing, that's what I'd say.
Agreed, yeah, but once it's passed, then it's almost impossible to change.
No, it's easy to change, it's hard to change now. By a deadline.
Once it's passed, we can always amend it, but right now, we don't have any any rules at all.
What's the part that you don't like, I'm curious?
Does that, well, have you read the emails?
I read some, some of them.
Okay, so my, my issue is this, number one, in the very beginning of this, we say that. Be in compliance with the comprehensive plan. Okay, that's come up before, and I know that's an old.
If we don't talk about comprehensive plan.
Okay, fair. I mean, that, that is a, that is an incorrect statement, because this is not in compliance with the comprehensive plan.
How is it not in compliance?
The com- comprehensive plan has several elements. That will put together when the residents of this.
Two thousand one.
Okay, and a lot of work went into developing a comprehensive plan, that's very comprehensive, I mean, pages.
No, I don't, I wanna say why this is not in keeping with the comprehensive plan.
And it's like, what the comprehensive plan says is that we're gonna maintain. The rural character. We're gonna maintain the topography, we're gonna maintain the visibility.
How does this not do that?
Have you driven up Route five seventeen in New Jersey and looked at the solar field? That they have installed it, they're atrocious, so these are eyesore.
And Route twenty two also.
Well, that's all I'm familiar with is five seventeen, but I mean, it it's a, it's a, it's the most terrible thing you would ever wanna have around here.
I would disagree with that tremendously, but sure.
Okay, I mean visually, I mean.
It's not my backyard.
One of the things that this, this does, if I understand it right, in R one, I have a house. I have two lots, one on each side. I think this allows me, if I read it right. To level those two lots and put in two solar fields. With no buffering. And completely destroy the aesthetics of the neighborhood. I mean, I I brought up in one of the emails, my good friend David's solar field.
You cannot do that unless it's exclusively to. To power your house.
Pardon me, I I understand that, I would, I would do that to exclusively power my house, but I could do that.
Right.
Okay.
You can't do it in order to.
Think, think about it, starting up two O nine, and you see David's got a small little thing there, right? It's not too atrocious, but if that is scattered all over the hillsides, as people could do. In residential areas. I mean, it completely destroys the township, the comprehensive plan says we're gonna maintain the rural character. We're gonna maintain historic character of this township. And the, and the comprehensive plan is supposed to be the guiding light for the decisions that we make. And the decisions of the supervisor.
Mitch, did you read Scott's response, his email?
I I read Scott's, I I read, I read all of that, that says you have to, you have to. Provide for these uses, I think that's atrocious in the state of Pennsylvania, I'm sure that.
I don't like it either, but that's. And we were dealt, and we have.
I I understand, but you can also then develop the criteria. In the ordinances, so that you minimize the impact. I mean. In my opinion, this could destroy the character of the township. Just because of the.
So how would you address this specifically, solar and warehouses, how would you address that?
Well, what what I, what I would, what I would propose is I would propose that in R one. You only, you you eliminate ground based systems. It has to be part of the house, it has, it says this here, it's on the roof, it's on the sides. Because then, and and it's part of the residential structure. When you put it in, when you allow the ground based. Auxiliary uh, systems. Then you really start chewing up a lot of acreage, I mean, these things look atrocious. I mean, you you must have driven in um. California and looked at some of the windmill.
I think they were progressive, and I think they were great, that's my view, on windmills, I understand what your view is.
Yeah, well, it's, it's not just my view, I mean, I've tried to take my personal view out of it. To go back to what, what did the residents and the landowners in this township say? When the comprehensive plan was put together.
I don't think it says in it that they didn't want windmills, but I'm.
I don't think that that's changed. And the reason I don't think that's changed is because we talked about this warehouse uh, facility at Mountain Manor. Okay? And the the. They would clear out the door, the residents that knew about it, were clear out the door because they opposed it so much. Okay. I didn't hear you. Well, yeah, I understand it was voted down, but now you're talking about putting uh, uh, ordinance and regulations that are gonna allow these things. And I've said in this.
They will allow a million square foot building, it it will only allow fifty thousand square feet. In the, in hundred fifties in where, in the industrial, in the industrial. We got a big, a couple of bigger ones going on already.
But I mean, there's two issues, there's the solar. Fields and then there are the warehouses.
Yeah.
Okay, but the point is, when the residential asks. And and I'm a big proponent, we're going, let's do a survey, let's redo the. The comprehensive plan, and then then we, then we have something that's current and fact based. That just because I don't think it's changed, maybe I'm wrong, there are some things that have changed, like the whole solar. Uh, movement has changed. The, the whole windmill thing has changed the way that energy is created. I don't think. That there would be nearly the acceptance from this group, that we were talking about putting together an ordinance to build a coal-fired power plant. I think there would be a completely different.
I think you're allowed to have a coal-fired power plant. Yeah, you can't make it not, I don't think we want it, but you're allowed to have one.
So you, so you try to write the ordinances. The, the whole thing, um, I'll, I'll go back to when I started in this, in this group. I mean, I don't know anything about being on a planning commission, so what do I do? I go try to find out and get some training. And I, I look at what the state is saying, and they say the first thing that you do in a municipality is you develop a comprehensive plan. You put together a view as to how. The township should progress, and then. The planning commission and the supervisors manage to make that happen. Okay, I don't think we're doing that, we have a comprehensive plan. Uh, I can't help the fact that it isn't, hasn't been updated in twenty years. But the previous one was in effect for thirty.
If I can say something, and.
Sure.
Commission. As Mister Strunk said, we have this hand belt to us, that we have to make sure there are uses. Uh, in various zones as per the. Uh. Memo that. Attorney Moore was good enough to share with us, uh, but what makes it worse is that if you read the comprehensive plan. That you, under the Pennsylvania municipalities code. And I just pulled it here now, just as we were talking. No action by the governing body of a municipality. Shall be invalid. Nor shall the same be subject to a challenger appeal. On the basis that the action is inconsistent with, or fails to comply with the comprehensive plan.
Why do we even have a comprehensive? Why do we go through all this comprehensive plan stuff, to have that clause just take it all away? I think that would matter, doesn't matter if we don't comply with the comprehensive. I understand it's still.
It doesn't matter legally, okay? Okay, and then there are two ways to look at this. How do we, how do we operate? How do we, how do we operate? As a body that is empowered to manage what's going on in the township. I mean, from my perspective, I would say you go out and you talk to the residents and they, the, the landowners, and you see what they want. And then you take that into consideration and go ahead, as Robert and I have talked about, it says, there's certain legal things. That have to be complied with, whether you like them or not, okay? And there are a lot that we don't like, and then you try and balance that, but you try and do what's right for the residents of the township.
Mitch, I don't think there's a person here that would disagree with you. The problem is, and you fail to recognize, is that our hands are tied, we have to allow certain things. Now, you could argue, yes, that ground-based systems in a, in a A S E C, A S, A S E S should not be allowed. Well, that may preclude many, many people in townships from having solar. Because their roof, their roof is shaded by trees, my roof, for example, I couldn't do it. Which is, I, I wouldn't, that's why I had to put the ground bases in it, ground-based systems cost probably twice to three times as much money. The economics are gonna drive it, but if at some point people want a solar system so they can pay twenty dollars a month for their electric bill like I do. Well, then. They, they should be allowed to do it, because they may say, well, why do you let Tom do it, but you won't let Hank do it, well, Hank, Hank, you know. Hank needs a ground basis. So. If you think they're ugly, okay, but somebody else may think they're fine.
Then include, then if, if you have to go that way, and I would say you, I would say you would not have to have ground-based systems. In R one. Okay, that, that's an option you have in the way that we write the regulations. But if you absolutely have to have it that way and see it that way, then at least buffer them.
You can't. But, but from, because you'll shade them, then they don't work.
Yeah, that, that's what we talked about last time.
Uh, yeah, we had quite a discussion on it.
Looked at page eight, there is buffering for ground bases.
But it's not, um. Not really, it's, it's not like, it's not like a long. But I don't know what to tell you, Mitch.
But I, I will say one thing, I agree with you, Mitch, I actually think we should have a comprehensive plan. Um, I think twenty-two years is a long time, it's, it's not a bad exercise, it does cost money. Do, um. I don't think you're gonna see any changes in what, in what comes out of it. I, I want the, I want a role, uh, environment, which is why I'm sitting here. Which is why we fought to prevent the cell tower from going in, why we fought to prevent the concrete plant from coming in, why we fought to prevent the warehouse from going into Mountain Manor. I could go on and on and on with all these things that we have fought. But like I said, our hands are tied, we've only so many things that we can do, without having this ordinance for solar, which has been said. You're allowing people to put it anywhere they want, so now we're trying to pigeonhole it where we think it's best.
I get that.
So the, the only real complaint that I think that you have that we could change. Is to not allow ground now. In an R one. I disagree with that, but.
But that would be an option.
That would be an option to do that. Cause I think it would, it would prohibit a lot of solar systems from being put in. That if they eliminate fossil fuel, or they make it ridiculously expensive and the cost of electric goes. People are gonna want a solar-based system. It's not to say we couldn't change the ordinance when people are beating on the door because they wanna put it in, but.
You can see a lot of people cutting trees down. And we are, we already voted.
Well, we have a motion.
It's also been my experience that. No ordinance, no amendment is perfect. And I think one of the, um. The strength of the zoning system is that anything can be changed, and we continue to be changing that. But sometimes you don't know what the change is until you pass an amendment, and then you see what the, the, uh. Plans are that come in that don't conform. I mean, look, I, do you give me an example right now, something will, will come in, which is, um. What is it called, uh, Westfield Commons? Where under our, um. Our, um. What is it run?
The zoning order?
Yeah, the, um.
They're asking for a couple of variants from our.
It's, it's, uh, it's three oh eight, section three oh eight, it's, uh. Incentivized, um.
Yeah, that's.
Incentivized excuse, well. Okay, um, that was written for, uh, the assumption that the façades. On buildings would be facing the street. Well, here's a situation where, uh, to protect the neighborhood behind, the building should be back, well, that changes things. In this particular instance, it will go to the zoning hearing board, and they will figure out whether what they want is permissible, but. No, it's a good plan, it's better than the plan that would be, um, allowed under. What we wrote. We don't know that until somebody comes in and we say, okay, yeah.
Things change as well, I mean, it, it's not unheard of that in twenty years, there'll be almost no commercial at all. Anywhere. Because there's no such thing as retail anymore.
Well, look at what you've brought up about parking, which is also on the agenda. That's changing drastically too. Uh, but. Our. Our rules are for, uh, what it was maybe in the nineteen eighties or nineties, we haven't changed it since. So that's why we're, we're reexamining. And you're right, it should be reexamined, but anyway. Everything changes.
We can vote again if you want, so there wasn't making a motion, pardon me, motions, I made a motion. Approve the, approve the, as written. Recommend approval of the two ordinances, section.
Orders two, two point nine, that's written.
Very second.
My second.
All right, all in favor? And opposed? Nay, two of us, yeah.
Just I'm curious, why are you nays?
Why am I named? I, like I said in the last time, I, I literally cannot see any scenario where anybody's gonna wanna do this.
Okay.
I'm gonna tell you right now. I don't think it's economically viable, I don't know, I seriously have no idea why anybody would put in seventy-five thousand dollar solar system. To save two hundred dollars, to save two hundred dollars a month on their electric bill, but then, God knows however my. Whatever I run it up to a year, I mean, it's.
But, and I know you don't like this, but it's a reality, you've got the solar renewable energy credits, you've got tax credits, and you've got, uh, what was the third one? I can't forget what it was.
I, I can tell you stuff personally, I checked into solar for my own.
Yeah.
It would have to be ground-based based upon the way my home is set up. And I would have to spend a hundred and seven thousand dollars in order to put the system.
Divided by two hundred.
At seventy-one, I'm gonna enter through a mortgage for a hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
I think the economics of it are not gonna win, okay, I'm gonna tax.
And that's with a government subsidies.
When they said it was a hundred and seven that I had, after the ad said.
Since we, we have brought up the subject, and I've brought up the subject several times about the comprehensive plan. Is it appropriate to make a motion? That we recommend to the supervisors that the comprehensive plan be updated and revised. By the end of twenty twenty-four.
That, that motion is appropriate, so you could second it in fact.
I'll second that.
Okay, any other discussion?
It may be appropriate, I wish you'd find the money to spend.
I was gonna say. It's gonna be a huge amount of money, and based on everything.
It does, it doesn't have to be a huge amount of money. Doesn't have to be, it doesn't, I mean, I've, I've done a lot, you can, I just did with, you know, Pennsylvania, a really, really cheap one. And you can, it depends, you can write a comprehensive plan, the amount of data you collect can be publicly available, can be. You don't have to hire a consultant, although you might want to, um. But ideally, you can find a relatively affordable consultant that can do it for a relatively cheap, it's a question of how much data you wanna bring, put into it.
Doing the survey of the residents.
The, the reality is that, um.
The plan, the, the overlay plan that we had for the yard, for the E D district, it was done by committed association expenses, forty thousand dollars. That was just an overlay for one district.
Yeah, but that was, that was expensive, but it was, it was a comprehensive. Comprehensive plans, he did the one for like township.
Planning code, it says, because David sent it to me again, I read it again today. The comprehensive plan is supposed to be updated every two years.
Yes, I don't believe that applies to second best. I don't know what townships, and I represent an upper township in boroughs, to have it updated like that. And with always, it's always behind.
There is a motion to second on the table.
So what's the motion again?
The motion is to.
Twenty-four to, to. Develop.
Yes.
The update.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Nay. You know, we just put twenty, twenty-four on.
All right.
There you go, can we take one of those things off the agenda items now, wasn't that one of them?
No.
The bottom of those.
Oh, man.
Parking regulations, what's that? I don't know, it's whatever's sitting on my head.
I have a simple recommendation for parking.
Yes.
Leave the schedule of parking the way it is, but make it all. I don't wanna say conditional, but. Allow the applicant to. Make a case for reducing the parking. Somehow put a language in there that allows them to present their argument.
They're already allowed to do that, and they do, and we all, well, we don't always, but. Usually allow, right, is a variance they ask for? Um, I know we've done it before.
Simple parking is probably what that is.
I think it's in our zoning.
So it would have to be variance, that's why, there were subdivisions.
What are, what are other townships doing to, for their parking regulations, are they saying parking should be provided as required, and it could be as simple as that? Because the applicant is going to know how many parking spaces they needed. But there needs to be some language in there that says if you don't have enough because you're parking in your neighbor's yard. Then, you know, it needs to be increased, and how, how is it being done?
In my experience, both representing and presenting plans in other townships, it's still pretty much like this. Um. My thoughts, when this was brought up, and I think I expressed them before. Might wanna consider keeping parking regulations for residential developments, but the commercial developments. Let it up to the applicant, and the reason I say that is, the commercial developments have to be successful, a restaurant isn't going to. Uh, Doug Dunn's isn't gonna move into that store, but they don't think there's adequate parking. For. The people that would come into the store. On a residential development, you have, you have a builder who's gonna build the house and sell and run. And he doesn't care whether there's enough parking there or not, once he leaves town. So, that's the primary difference that I see between those two. Types of uses. The, the commercial people will look out for their own best interest, they won't overbuild it. Uh, but.
I think they're currently forced to overbuild.
Right now, they're forced to overbuild.
And so you end up with these useless seas of whatever, I mean, go anywhere, I mean, that's, that is terrible.
Now, I, what we do see sometimes. Is when you have a lot of changes in uses, in other words, if you have a strip center that started thirty years ago, and it had a. Dry cleaning store and a laundromat, and then a beauty shop and a small. Dollar general or something like that. And there's no longer a demand for those stores, because the internet's putting them out of business, what's moving in is restaurants. Then there's not enough parking. In those strip shopping centers because of the. Restaurant uses. But that's sort of. Neither here nor there, because you can't control what's gonna happen.
Can I share the guidance on parking on the comprehensive plan?
Sure.
Okay, in section two point three point five, where it says encourage uses of land and building designs. That create harmonious appearances. And avoid future blemishes on the landscape of white. Part D says park, park, okay, required as part of the additional use review process. Landscaping in front of and around new commercial use. To provide a separation of these activities from the highway.
I think we have that, right?
To be placed along front yard. With parking in the rear, mandating the use of internal rear alleys on parking lot connections. So customers can move freely from one commercial use to another without reentering onto major streets. Apply the same requirements to the change and or expansion of existing non-conforming uses.
But no, that's what spaces, we're talking about a number of required spaces for.
Also where they're located, this is saying.
For the non-residential, for the non-residential uses, could we, could you, we could. Parking requirements to the subdivision of land development, could we?
You could.
Because that gives us the ability to waive and adjust without the variance process.
You could certainly do that, I don't see why not.
Sure.
You can waive all the parts, or can bring all the parts.
When you sit in subdivision land development ordinance, that's when we're, that's when we have the ability to regulate to the supervisors, various waivers of things. Like we, and we do it routinely for types of trees and, you know, fences and so forth, cause that's in the subdivision of land development ordinance, that's not a. Land. That's not a land use regulation that is under the zoning code, we can't waive that, need to get supervisors, that's why you need a, that's why you need a variance. To do that, cause that's a different. Substance of due process, right, that's a, that's a, that's a property right. But the subdivision of land development technical parts of it, you can put in the subdivision of land development ordinance, that is not. A land use regulation. Property right. And that's where we can do the, uh, we can do the waivers and, and.
So if. Using John's example, where if there's a jump Dollar General that goes out of business and now a restaurant goes in. That would, they, they would have to come in for a land development plan because they're changing the use.
Depends upon whether, again, was it a non-conforming use and is it a change or not?
Let's just say it's something else, and, and they would, they'd come in and change reviews, I just came in and changed. Yeah, it's a, it's a, but that. Well, that's conditional use under the zoning, if it were in the subdivision one, they'd have to give us a little, a little sketch or whatever they wanna do. And ask for the, you know.
I think my concern with that approach is that if your ordinance. I'm not thinking about the small stuff, and I actually like that you're keeping the residential requirements there. I'm worried about another big developer, or like a, a agenda petrus, and they're gonna say to their engineer, look at the ordinance. Make sure it meets everything as best you can, they're not gonna start by saying, we really don't wanna do all this parking. Cause they're just gonna assume, well, this is normal. Whereas if the ordinance says, guess what, you don't actually have to put two thousand parking spots in your retail facility, like, hey, we don't actually have to do that, great, we'll do less. What about the accessible spaces?
That's a good thing, I want, that's a good thing, right, right, so I was saying.
It has to be, we have to update it, we can't just enable, you know, allow us to grant more waivers.
No, you put this, let, let's say, let's say you did nothing else. You took, you took the current existing parking.
Yeah.
For, let's, we'll go commercial usage for whatever, for, for this example. And instead of having it under whatever section it is in the, in the zoning code. We put it in section whatever else of the subdivision of land, they still have to comply with it, they, when they come in and do their land development plan, they still have to comply with. With, um. Stormwater, all that kinda stuff, I mean, that's all in the subdivision of land development anyway, and, you know, we can grant waivers of, uh, you know. Couple of percentage here and there for stormwater flow and such, for example, make parking would be this, parking would. For their thing would be the same.
Makes a lot of sense.
I mean, that's, that, that might be a way to, cause it, cause is residential really our problem parking? Not really, it's, it's the commercial uses. And the, you know, two times a year, the, you know, a lot is, looks like it's half full in the rest of the year, it's nothing but. You know, paving as far as I can see.
I mean, this property right here is a great example, it's, I mean. More than half, that's gonna be parking spaces.
Right, that'll never.
What about accessible spaces, is that under ADA, is that required?
Yeah, that's federal law, that's, that's.
It is, it's the percentage of the total parking, so if the total parking is down, then the number of ADA goes down.
Does that how it works?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. I mean, that's what I, that's the way that I would recommend sort of looking at it. Is that, is that, is that a spot to get flexibility without a. Not, not only without a lot of pain. I agree. But a lot, not, and also, but not a lot of, it's easier for somebody who say wants to develop or frankly, redevelop. Some other half-empty, whatever it is, because if they redevelop some. A half-unused thing that's a long business two oh nine. They redevelop a new site plan, well, then things are gonna have to get updated.
How are they gonna know that until they've already developed their initial plans?
No, no, that, I'm talking about something that's already there. I'm talking about redevelop.
What I'm, what I'm just saying is this approach you're doing still means before they ever come to us. They're seeing that they have all these parking requirements, so they're gonna probably try to make it work.
Well, then parking requirements will be in two spots.
Yeah, make us a.
I think this is a topic that would be great for another joint session like we had outside.
Yeah, yeah. I agree.
Knock it through.
You know, but I was just thinking, as I was sitting here, is there's a way to sort of. Massage it a bit to make it, you know, to, to, you know, to make it, to make it work. I don't want them to have to overbuild parking spaces. And frankly, they probably don't even wanna overbuild parking spaces. Cause it uses up spot that could other, you know, that would otherwise be, uh, revenue generating.
I'll, I, I feel we're on the cutting edge with this, just as we were with the ED zone, just as we've been with the signage and so forth. And there's not a lot of, uh, precedent to go on with different townships. I think, you know, it's, we've, we've gotta sort of feel our way. Here in a joint session would be a good way to.
I don't think anybody else is talking about it this way, right? I don't think.
Not, not around here.
Not around here. No, no, no. Talking about around here. I don't, anybody that's talking.
I think we're, we're this township, especially with Langston is apparently on the cutting edge of trying to conceptualize new things here. And so this is another one.
How can you imagine instead of going to bring it's left in its side?
I would, you, you, you literally work lots of other. We're not always on the same page, but we're on the same page here. It's true, though. We're not always. There's a fair amount of common ground here. All right, you, would you like, you know what? Do we need to do a motion on this or no? We need to sort of schedule it to do it with.
Yeah, we'll schedule. Let's, let's wait a month until we get.
Yeah, get through the other one.
I make a motion that we table the conversation on.
Uh, on the parking?
On the parking until such time that a joint works, I think, can be scheduled.
Second. Bingo.
How do we prepare for that meeting? So we're all coming in there with guns ablaze and.
You know, I think. A couple of meetings. I, I really think one is bringing up ideas and bringing up problems and then sort of refining it.
Are there any resources out there that we can tap?
Uh, we just gotta, was that Julie?
What about the Townships Supervisor Association? They have any?
What do they call that?
P stat.
P stats, right.
They have any recommendations?
No, I mean, I think our, our feelings are the same. Looking for ideas, we're looking for concepts.
Whenever I go to a meeting, I wanna come prepare, so we don't sit in there.
Well, I think.
What other resources are there that we can, if you can find any research on, some, sometimes it's sort of done thing, at least we've, uh, we've had some. But what's the agency that the supervisors all belong to?
Right. And for boroughs, there's a similar agency called Pennsylvania Association for Boroughs. So instead of P stat, it's P sags, and they would also have.
I get a little lose letter from them and it's, it's good, it's worth it. And you, they, they have publications you can try to.
Yeah, I'm just saying, there may be some information out there that would be.
How, how would you define a problem for parking that we're trying to solve?
We think there's an overbuild of parking, which, which causes more runoff and stormwater issues.
Less trees, less.
Trees. We're trying to make it a more rural township.
We're trying, we're trying to.
Right. I mean, we, the great best example we keep you getting is the Walmart giant. Because you've got so many, um, uses there, the parking space requirements multiplies.
Right.
And the reality is people are doing both things. It's not, it's not necessarily.
They want a bright amount of parking, but you don't want the big.
You know, it's interesting.
But the whole view is that commercial businesses will decide what amount of.
You know, what's interesting about, you know, that's actually an interesting dichotomy, your, that your example, because they're on opposite sides of the road of one another. All right, so.
Yeah.
Giant, on the, the giant side, the Kmart side, or if you're as old as I am, and lived here long enough, the big, the, uh.
James.
Jay, no, 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 what was it? Grants.
Grant.
Grants when I was a child.
W C Grant.
Grants when I, when I was a child in the seventies. That, that shape, except for adjusting giant slightly on an angle. That parking actually has not changed since I was two years old, my conservative kid.
Yeah.
Right. And it's not still, like, it's not like you pull into Giant. On my way home, which I do, you know, three times a week, you know, pick something up, stuff up for dinner, and there's no place to park. There's always some spots, even, and you know. And across the street, we have this, this wicked parking field. That really, except for a couple of times. That, that season, you know, that kind of, it, it, it doesn't really do, cause it's useless and it makes a spot frankly, for like. The homeless to park their cars in the back corner out of the way.
Could have a whole other building.
You could have probably two buildings in there. And so, so there's your, so there is your real, your inadvertent real world example is. Nobody thought about it fifty years ago, really, cause that's what, you know, when, when that was put in and it still works. And then the updated one, when Walmart came in in the nineties and cleaned everything up and, you know, took off, you know, all the stuff from Redmond finishing and the rest of it. And they did that.
Probably parking increased, actually.
Yeah, I mean, but that, but that's what I'm talking about.
Well, but, yeah, not to prolong the discussion, but the perfect example is the Eli Valley Mall.
Yes.
Well, they got rid of a lot of that.
When they, when they built a whole new.
All those fronts.
Yeah.
Bonefish Grill and all those.
And yet, and yet it's still there, right?
And yet it's still there, and there's still plenty of parking for everybody.
Yeah.
There's so much.
Within that house, within that outside area, though, there's never parking. Take a motion when you adjourn.
Can I get, bring up one subject before we?
That'd be good.
Before, before you do that, before you do that, Rob, before you do that, uh, Mike, let me make a motion to the table conversation on parking. I reseconded. No, we didn't.
Yeah, uh, I came by today, the rebuilt, what was a bed and breakfast on, um.
Buttermilk.
Buttermilk Falls Road, which.
Is it finally done?
Bruce wrapped and, and been doing for the last two years.
Couple of years more.
For, and I think it's residence for himself and his wife or girlfriend. And then I came by, uh, last night, I think, um, the new St. Luke's building, and the lights were on outside. Looks very nice. I'm just thinking that we don't have anything in the township that, um. Is it, let's say, a nod to good architecture and good planning and maybe we could. Especially have some sort of a certificate of merit for, uh, good design that the planning commission could. Um, sometimes at the time when something comes up like this, just go and give somebody a.
That light's up at night too. Did you notice?
Yeah, that's with, with purple.
Like my car.
Give people who've done good design, uh, some kind of.
Or welcome center certainly would.
Yeah, some sort of a slightly significant.
All in favor of a journey? Thank you.
Nobody likes this idea?
I do, actually.
Okay.
So I'm, 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 I'm all, we were on. Are we adjourned? We're adjourned. No, I gotta go. All right, how you doing?